Good evening and welcome to the York County School Board Regular Meeting for November 21st. I'd like to call the meeting to order this evening. I'd also like to welcome our newest board member, Mr. Jimmy Richardson. Jimmy, welcome.
Thank you.
He will be serving District 4. We're excited about working together in the days ahead and I'll be sharing a few comments relating to Mr. Mathis and his service on the board a little bit later in the meeting. At this time, I'd like to bring up our pledge leader, Abigail Lee. It is with great pride and pleasure that we recognize Abigail Lee as our pledge leader this month. Abigail is highly involved within her school and community. At Waller Mill, she has participated in our annual dinner theater and our cavalcade of stars this fall. She also shares her talents by singing in our 5th grade course and being a member of our dance club. One of the teachers describes Abby as a quiet leader. She is called on to lead by other teachers because she listens so well and is able to help other students in a quiet and supportive way. She volunteers to help whenever she can. Outside of school, Abigail dances with the I Dance in Williamsburg. She does jazz, tap, ballet, and lyrical. She volunteers for the Williamsburg Buddy Ball Program where she helps as one of the one assistant for a younger child with autism. On Saturdays, she volunteers at a neighboring horse farm. As you can tell, Abby is a well-rounded student and a delight to know. Abby, could you lead us, please? Please stand.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Abigail. Okay, we're gonna enter our recognitions and awards this evening, starting with the seniors of the month. And Ms. Haywood, I believe you have our first award.
I do indeed, Mr. Chair. I would like to introduce you to Gina Goodwin- Godwin, I'm sorry, from Bruton High School as Senior of the Month for November. If Gina will stand. Mom, Dad, Grandfather, and Grandmother here, if anybody will stand. And let me share some information with you about Gina. Gina Godwin is a talented orator, as well as a strong and dedicated leader at Bruton High School. Gina is a student who has a strong leadership prowess. This was evident in her teachers and especially her band director, Ms. Kara Thompson-Townsend said, when she was named the most outstanding band student as a 9th grader. Since that time, Gina has continued to refine her strong leadership abilities, demonstrated through her dedication to Bruton High School bands. Gina is more than just a member of the marching band, concert band, indoor drum line, pit orchestra, and jazz band. In all of these groups, Gina has assumed a key role in supporting, as well as leading her peers. Gina is a member of the band council and serves as the librarian, drum major, saxophonist. With each role, Gina dedicates herself completely to the Bruton Panther Band family. Not only is Gina musically talented, she's also a very dynamic orator and has had the opportunity to address Williamsburg youth at several venues throughout the city, at First Baptist and Ty Water Baptist Churches. Gina serves her community as the NAACP Youth Council Vice President and has also participated in the NAACP ACO competition to display her talent as a pianist. Gina maintains a very busy schedule of both her band and community commitments. However, she always schedules time to study in order to excel in honors and advanced placement classes. Each spring, she has received academic honors. Please join me in congratulating Gina Godwin as the Senior of the Month from Bruton High School.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Kerski.
Yes, it is my honor to present the Grafton High School Student of the Month for November, Ms. Julia Hoys. Julia, would you stand with your parents, Michael and Claudia, and I believe that's your brother Alex with you? Always wearing a smile, Julia is an outstanding student, a cherished friend, a phenomenal musician, and a proven leader at Grafton High School. For three years, Julia has been academically. She is a member of the National Honor Society, German Honor Society, and Tri-M Music Honor Society. She also plays the French horn in the award-winning Grafton High School Marching Band. Julia is a super talented musician. Her honors and awards are many, including All District Band for the past three years, a member of the VMEA Honor Band and Honor Choir, Most Improved Symphonic Band Musician, Most Outstanding Wind Ensemble Musician, and Marching Band Section Leader of the past two years. In addition, Julia had an Academy Award-winning role in the GHS 3D Program sponsored by the York County Sheriff's Department in 2014. Grafton High School is honored to recognize Ms. Julia Hoys as its November Senior of the Month. Julia plans to attend Liberty University next fall to study music education. Julia, we are so very proud of you. Congratulations and the best of luck in your future.
I have the pleasure of introducing the next Senior of the Month from TAB High School, Jessie Myers. And Jessie, and I believe your mom, Dr. Sherry Coyle. Anybody else in your family?
Yeah, Paul Rice and my dad, and then Professor Adam Exeter.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Jessie is an outstanding student, athlete, and person. She is positive, enthusiastic, and empathetic. Jessie has been inducted into four honor societies: English, Rho Kappa, Mu Alpha Theta, and the National Honor Society. She is the current Secretary of the English Honor Society. Her cumulative GPA through the end of her junior year is 4.5896. Jessie is a four-year member of the Club Earth and a two-year member of the Key Club and DECA, where she was also elected president this year. One of Jessie's most significant involvements is the Student Council Association, where she's been elected by her peers to a position all four years. She was the class president during her freshman year and the class secretary for the next three years. Finally, Jessie is a member of the two-time state championship field hockey team, where she was selected by her coaches and peers to be a captain during her senior year. Jessie was a DECA State finalist during her junior year and an International Career Development Conference qualifier. She was named a National Field Hockey Scholar during her junior year, as well as an AP Scholar of Distinction. Jessie plans to major in business management, communications, and/or public policy, and hopes to attend the University of Virginia. In conclusion, Jessie is the epitome of a true TAB Tiger. Jessie, you make us very proud. Congratulations. And Mr. Medford.
Thank you, Dr. George. It's my pleasure to introduce our Senior of the Month for York High School for November, that's Sierra Gillis. Are you here? There she is, yes. And your mom and dad and sister, if they will stand with you. York High School is so pleased to announce the selection of Sierra as the November Senior of the Month. Three words that would describe Sierra are ambitious, intelligent, and determined. Sierra is passionate about her academics and puts a tremendous amount of thought into the classes that she selects each year. Sierra has maintained a 4.73 grade point average throughout high school, and she has taken a challenging course load each year. She is part of the International Baccalaureate Program, which is one of the most rigorous programs in the York County School Division. In addition, she is, in addition to being in the IB program, Sierra is a member of the National Honor Society, the National French Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, and a member of the Green Team. Sierra is on the Color Guard twirling team, a member of the Scholastic Bowl Team, and in 9th grade, she was in Shrek the Musical and Alice in Wonderland with our School of the Arts Program. Sierra is also active in her community as she has volunteered with many organizations. She volunteers regularly at the Williamsburg Regional Library, Safety Town, the Art Stroll, Marion Macklin Hospital, North Hampton Dance Twirl Camp, and the Natasha House Homeless Shelter. At the Homecoming Pep Rally this year, Sierra was voted by her classmates as the most likely to succeed. Imagine that. She is recognized by her teachers and her peers as a genuine and a caring person. York High and our community is very proud of you. You do have time to eat dinner on occasion, I hope. You stay busy, but we're very proud of your accomplishments, so congratulations.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna move into our Student Service Awards. And Ms. Haywood, I believe you have our first award.
I have our first Student Service Award recipient, and that is Gabriella Townsend, 5th grader from Waller Mill Elementary, and she will come forward with Jennifer Goodwin, principal. If you all remember, she was here in September as part of our Accent on Academics with the Great Kindness Challenge. So let me share some information with you about Gabriella. Gabriella Townsend is an exceptional student in every way. Academically, she works very hard in her classes and is a very conscientious student who is always giving her best effort and constantly earning her place on the honor roll. Gabby is actively involved in our Fine Arts Magnet Program and most recently performed a vocal piece for the opening act of our annual Cavalcade of Stars show. She has been in our dinner theater each year. Gabby also demonstrates leadership skills as a student mentor in leading friendship groups with younger children under the direction of our school counselor, Mrs. Gaylord. Outside of school, Gabriella attends Ebenezer Baptist Church with her grandmother. She shows off her athletic skills by playing soccer with the Legacy Soccer Program. When Gabby is not at our school, she can be often found spending time at Bruton High School. Gabby supports her mom, band director Kara Townsend, by being the school, the girl, uh, shoe girl. Shoe girl, she'll have to tell us about that in a moment. She can be seen close by the band helping out and cheering them on by showing that Panther pride spirit in our community. We do hope that even though it's Gabby's last year at Waller Mill, that she'll be back to visit each spring when her mom brings the Bruton High School band to perform in our Storybook Character Parade. It's the highlight of the event. Gabriella's positive attitude, strong work ethic, and witty personality make her a wonderful role model and a true joy to be around. She is a student, a daughter, granddaughter, and sister that makes those who know her her very best make her very proud. She is an exceptional student, and we are honored to have her as a Waller Mill shining star. Please join me in congratulating Gabriella Townsend.
Thank you, Dr. George. York Little School Student Service Award. I have the pleasure of introducing Hema Graubry. And if you can come up with Dr. Hutten, your principal from York Middle School. Hema Prasad is a young lady with talent, strength, and compassion. Her quiet deposition belies a deep enthusiasm for many endeavors in her daily life at York Middle School and the community. You may even recognize her from the York County Board meetings where she previously led the Pledge of Allegiance. At school, Hema is an active member of the Youth Volunteer Corps, um, Corps helping to collect books for school in Africa, donating cans to the local food bank, and facilitating a coat drive. Hema serves as the Secretary of Student Council Association, and she is an important active member of her band. Her drive to do well does not go unnoticed at school with her many recognitions, including National Junior Honor Society, the Science Fair, and Reflections. She is a straight A student that has previously been nominated as Student of the Month and outstanding band student. In the community, she regularly volunteers as a Girl Scout. Also this year, the Virginia Air and Space Center invited her to present her Walter, Walter, I can't talk to that, Water Filtration on Mars Project. She is well-rounded, she is a skilled athlete who has attended the world's figure skating competition. Others often remark that Hema's helpfulness and her compassionate nature, and her compassionate nature. She is always prepared and always willing to help. She is gifted academically, respected by peers and adults, and is an asset to our community. We are lucky to have her as part of our York County Schools. Congratulations to you.
Okay, this time, we're gonna move into our Community Volunteers of the Month. And Ms. Haywood, once again, I believe you have the first award.
I do have Jessica Leonard from Waller Mill Elementary as the first volunteer of the month, if she will come forward. Back with Mrs. Goodwin. For over five years, Mrs. Jessica Leonard has been a dedicated parent volunteer at our school. For three years, she has served on our PTA Executive Board, and for the past two years, she has been the, has held the important role as PTA President. Mrs. Leonard is caring, dedicated, and above all, and all, and all about the kids. She is always looking for creative and spirited ways to make our school the best place it can be to grow and to learn. Mrs. Leonard is involved in all aspects of the organization. She helps coordinate our main fundraiser, the Walk-a-Thon, helps to organize our open house, Parents Event, and Back to School Night, and coordinates our Teacher Appreciation Week activities. Mrs. Leonard is instrumental in making our Spring Fest a yearly event hosted by the PTA, and all of these events a success for the students, teachers, and families at Waller Mill. She is supportive of our school and is willing to help in any way. During our recent delay in getting back into our school for the days prior to school opening, Mrs. Leonard was behind us all the way. She delivered lunch to teachers and served us from her own van when we couldn't get inside the school. During the two days we moved back in, she brought food, snacks, and positive messages of support so that we could be ready for all that important first day. We are truly grateful for all she does, and our school is better for having her involvement. Again, please join me in congratulating Mrs. Jessica Leonard.
Mrs. Haywood, does this mean that Waller Mill has their own food truck?
No ideas, no, don't get any ideas, right?
Don't start that. Okay, Mr. Richardson.
Suzette Sapp, if you would come forward with Dr. Hutten. Suzette Sapp generously gives her time and helps in many ways when she volunteers at Yorktown Middle School. Ms. Sapp always makes people feel special when they meet her. She's a respected member of the Falcon family because she's always willing to support the school. Ms. Sapp is a parent and a welcome volunteer in the main office. She is warm, friendly, and brightens the day when she arrives. You can tell she enjoys volunteering. Mrs. Sapp calls to let staff know she is available and offers her service whatever is needed. She also responds to staff who call upon her to help in special events or just to lend an extra hand. Although there are times when her full-time work schedule will not permit, Mrs. Sapp does as much as possible to help the school community. She is ready and willing to do anything that is asked, even when the task could be tedious like filing notes, writing bus notes, making copies, counting out class sets of hundreds of flyers and Scantrons, and to have them ready for easy distribution. Ms. Sapp supports the cheerleaders and the coach by assisting with getting the girls ready for events, finding new uniforms, and sorting materials. Ms. Sapp greets all the parents, the staff, and students with undivided attention and always thinks about how she can assist them. She embraces each volunteer opportunity with a warm, friendly smile that brightens everyone's day. And Suzette, I know you, so all this is true, ironically, when I was reading all this. But you do a great job, and every school needs a volunteer like Mrs. Sapp, so thank you.
Yes, I'd like to interrupt this program for a moment to bring you a special message from the York County School Board. Someone left their lights on. WWN-4825 Nissan interior lights. Don't be shy, go ahead and get up. Nobody? Okay. That's the message I had, anyway. Okay, Ms. Kerski, would you like to take it from here?
I would. I would like to invite the past president of the York Foundation for Public Education to come forward, Mr. Jim Noel. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Noel for his years of tremendous service to the York Foundation. Would you all please join me in giving him a round of applause? He's guided the York Foundation for several years. We are very glad to see that you're coming to our school board members' meetings now. Now, would our pledge leaders, Student Service Award recipients, and the students of the month, please come on down? Abigail, Hema, Gabriella, Gina, Julia, Jessie, and Sierra. On behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education, we have a treat for you. We would like to congratulate Abigail Lee, a 5th grader from Waller Mill Elementary, for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. And we would like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients. Hema Prasad from Yorktown Middle School and Gabriella Townsend from Waller Mill Elementary School. And we would like to recognize our four Senior of the Month Award recipients. Gina Godwin from Bruton, Julia Hoys from Grafton, Jessie Myers from TAB, Sierra Gillis from York. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented tonight on behalf of the York Foundation in partnership with their donor, Jeanne Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. Congratulations, students.
Yes, it is. Go, girl. Okay, Dr. Shandor, would you like to take this next section for us?
Sure. Dr. George, board members, just wanted to spend a few minutes to thank Mr. Mathis for his six months of service. He's unable to be here this morning, or this morning, how about this evening? I personally want to thank him for his commitment as he's served on the board for the past many months. I appreciate his dedication to the students and staff of the School Division. Mr. Mathis spent a great deal of time in our schools, talking with our staff members. He also spent a great deal of time with our team, learning about the School Division. I certainly appreciate his support and thank him for his service.
Thank you. Do any board members have any comments?
No, I just would like to echo, again, thanks to Todd. He came on at a time that we lost Paige, and it was a difficult situation when you lose a board member. It was the first time that I can remember that we've had to do this, and it was a difficult job. But he came on board, filled in Paige's position, and was there as we needed him. And just to say again, thank you so much for his six months of being here.
I would echo that, too. I'd like to thank Todd Mathis for serving. He is a proven leader as a military officer, he is a community servant, and he is, has been a tremendous advocate for public education here in York County. It wouldn't surprise me if we saw his name on the ballot for a higher office one day, and I would like to thank him for his service.
And same here. Echo all your comments. He did a great job in six months. He was a quick learner, because he had to jump in, I mean, after Paige, after we lost Paige, it was, it was difficult for all of us emotionally, and, because we do become a family of a unit. And when we lost Paige, that was very difficult. Doing something we've never done before was difficult. It was, it was just, he came in at a very difficult time, and, but jumped right in running, and so we appreciated his six months of service until the election was held, so thank you, Todd.
I would also like to thank Todd for his service. I actually just got the meeting for the first time on Election Day, him and his wife both, very nice man, and I appreciate his service and time that he gave to the York County Schools. Thank you.
And I echo all of your comments. I appreciate it, Todd, and I take his time on the planning commission really was beneficial when it came to capital projects.
It was, it was, indeed.
Planning and that sort of thing, so hats off to you, Todd, thank you. And Jimmy, welcome. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Shandor.
All right, our next presentation is gonna be Accent on Academics. So tonight Accent on Academics project is Blankets for Hospice. This project was directly related to the community service competence in Family Consumer Science III. The students in the class created tie fleece blankets for patients at Gentiva Hospice. I would now like to introduce Mr. Paul Rice, Grafton Middle School principal, who will provide more information on this project and introduce his team. Mr. Rice.
It's an honor and pleasure to be in front of everyone tonight, highlighting the academics excellence at Grafton Middle School. And what I'd like to do now is turn it over to the staff and the students, and they'll make their presentation.
Good evening, Dr. George, School Board members, Dr. Shandor, staff, and community members. Thank you for having us here tonight. I am Pamela Robnett, and I have the pleasure of teaching Family Consumer Science to a wonderful group of students at Grafton Middle School. My students learn about community service by examining concerns related to the community and ways they can volunteer in the community. I wanted to find a way for my students to get involved in a project that was student-led and where they had true ownership of the project. In my classroom, I have the opportunity to prepare students to become college, career, and community-ready. The division's mission is to engage all students in learning skills and knowledge needed to make productive contributions in the world. One aspect of that is through building relationships and partnerships with the community by learning today and transforming tomorrow. Here to tell you more about the actual project is Kayla Perry, an 8th grader at Grafton Middle School, Kylie Zagursky, an 8th grader at Grafton Middle School, Catherine Sanders, a 9th grader at Grafton High School, and Lynda James, Gentiva Hospice representative.
Hello, my name is Kayla Perry. Hospice cares for patients who are dealing with end-of-life issues. Instead of giving them treatments to cure them, hospice provides them with comfort. The patients are given pain relief and nursing care throughout their days. Hospice strives to make every moment for the patient as meaningful as possible. Last year, in my Family Consumer Science class, we made blankets for hospice. We studied and talked about our community and ways you can make a difference as teenagers. After some research, we brainstormed ideas on how our class can make a difference. Once we made a list, we voted on which idea we wanted to do, and as you can tell, we decided to make blankets for hospice. It meant a lot to me to know that I was helping someone who might not be feeling so well to have a better day. In the future, I hope to help, provide more help with hospice and make an impact on someone else's life.
Hello, my name is Kylie Zagursky. Blankets for Hospice is an ongoing project from last year led by Ms. Robnett's Family Consumer Science III class. In our project, we made blankets for hospice patients. One of the main parts of making blankets was the research. In our research, we had to look up the materials we needed. We chose fleece fabric because it's soft, warm, and comforting, which we wanted, is what we wanted to provide the patients with. While doing the research for the blankets, we had to find a way to make money in order to buy the fabric and figure out how much fabric we needed for each blanket. We discovered a nice size is about one and a half yards, and we would need to have two pieces that size for each blanket. We made sure we bought many different colors and designs and patterns, mostly bright and cheery. We had to find a hospice group to donate to. Also, we kept our eye out for sales at local fabric stores. We did find a great deal on fabric at Hancock Fabrics. We were able to purchase materials to make 20 blankets. We decided- Fabrics. We were able to purchase materials to make 20 blankets. We decided to raise money by baking cookies and making lemonade and sold those items at our back-to-school night. At first, we were going to set a price, but decided it would be better to base it on donations. People may feel that they wanted to give a little more if they knew that the funds were being used for a good cause. People were very generous. We raised nearly $200. Some people in hospice may have lost all of their family, so it's nice to know that someone cares for them. We did a lot of hard work to make these blankets, but it was worth it to know the blankets were going to a good place in the community. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Catherine Sanders. Last year, in Mrs. Robnett's Family Consumer Science II class, I too was able to be a part of the project. Now came the hard part, constructing the tie fleece blankets. We were placed in groups of approximately four students per group. We had to match up two pieces of fabric that complemented each other and spread them out on our large tables. Next, we matched the fabric and trimmed everything to make it even. Sounds easier than it is, trust me. Now, we had to cut out corners and begin cutting five-inch slits with an inch in between each one along the perimeter of each piece of fabric. It is difficult cutting through thick fleece fabric. Finally, we were able to begin tying the ends together. At first, we started with one knot, but we quickly learned that we needed to double knot the blanket because some of the knots were coming undone. We all had a wonderful time making the blankets and knew in our hearts that it was for an amazing cause. Once we completed the blankets, the hospice representatives stopped by and we presented them with the 20 blankets. I felt so proud, and it was nice to hear their words to us about how we were making a difference in our community. While the hospice representatives were there to pick up the blankets, they told us all about hospice and the wonderful things they do for people who are in the final stages of life and their families. It touched my heart and hopefully a few of my classmates' hearts to hear about how these blankets were going to be used. I hope I can always find ways to make a difference in my community.
My name is Linda James, and I work with Gentiva Hospice. We were so impressed with this thoughtful act by these young students to a population that is in their most fragile state. These students did not know any of their patients or their families. However, they chose to dedicate their time and effort to help provide comfort and an act of kindness to hospice patients. A gift of this type can provide not only comfort, but also dignity and a validation to life. We would like to note that these students raised money for this project by holding a bake sale to purchase the needed fabric. We were impressed by their efforts to ensure they could provide more blankets by clipping coupons and shopping sales. We felt this showed even more of a commitment and responsibility for planning for their mission. The fabrics chosen were colorful and cheery. We could tell they really gave thought to the male and female patients when making their color and pattern choices. You've already seen a couple of those up there, but here's one of the blankets that they made for our patients. So, this one was actually returned to us by a family who wanted to donate it back to the community after their loved one passed. Our patients are very thin and frail. They're often wheelchair-bound or bed-bound due to the loss of mobility as their disease progresses. Some of our main goals in hospice are to provide comfort and to promote dignity. It is amazing that what may seem like a small gift to some can be a bright spot in someone's last days. Sometimes, as hospice caregivers, we may give gifts, and it's the only gift they may receive during that span of the rest of their time with us. We feel the students of Grafton Middle School provided us to numerous patients with the gift of these blankets. They provide warmth to patients who have lost their natural insulation by weight loss. Some of our patients don't have families that come to visit them in facilities or families that can afford to provide gifts to their loved ones. As hospice providers, we know that a single act of kindness can make the difference in a person's life. We feel these students have impacted many of our patients with this single act of kindness. Showing compassion to those we do not know shows that others believe this as well. We also feel this demonstrates great strength of character in these students, and those are lessons that will truly last a lifetime. Thank you.
That must sound wonderful.
Thank you again for having us here tonight. Are there any questions?
No questions. It's just a phenomenal program that you do, a phenomenal gift back. And to see students that deeply embedded and involved is very, very special.
Thank you.
Most definitely. It pulls at your heartstrings.
It does.
And I'm just so proud of you all, the students, the teacher. I'm so proud of you all for taking on this type of project and giving back to, as the representative said, the people at their darkest hour. And you provided them comfort and love and reassurance. And my goodness, I'm just so proud of you all at Grafton Middle.
Thank you.
It's pretty awesome. I know that having a wife in the healthcare industry and Ms. Haywood as a nurse practitioner, takes an amazing heart for someone to work hospice, an amazing heart. And to know that one of our schools took it on as a project to support the program and what hospice can provide, but also just to be part and to educate yourselves about what really happens and what you were able to provide. I mean, as a board member, this is what it's all about. This is what our schools are all about. So, yes, textbooks and learning, but going outside that box, hats off to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I agree. I think that's the top of the learning curve there. Great job. Really loved it.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, the board's going to take a short recess so we can come down and meet tonight's award recipients.
Okay, welcome back. We'll now reconvene the meeting. Next, we'll enter our business portion of the meeting. Is there any unfinished business this evening?
Very much.
Okay, hearing that, we're going to move into presentations. And Dr. Shandor, would you like to introduce our first presentation?
Yes, thank you, Dr. George. Board members, I'm going to ask Mr. Mark Sheerhart, Associate Director, Capital Plans and Projects, please come to the podium to present this month's construction report.
First of all, Mr. Sheerhart, I think we'll let you know that Dr. James did well on your behalf last evening.
No pressure.
I haven't watched the video of it yet to make sure. I gave him a break, I gave him a break. But I didn't want to have to do it twice in a row, so I came in today. So, this is the Capital Projects Report for the month of November, and I'm only touching on two projects this evening. It'd be Wallamille Elementary School and also the coating. This is the last time you'll see this slide. You've seen it every month while the renovation has been going on at Wallamille. And again, on the left-hand side, the light green area is the area that the contractors are working in now. They are doing punch list items in the other areas after hours and on the weekends right now. So, they're continuing to work on these punch list items. Again, like I just mentioned, the renovation work continues. In the left wing, which is also known as the 100 Wing of the building, they have installed casework, sinks, doors, floor tile, lighting, HVAC, windows, roof, and etc. They are obtaining their final trades inspections. They're in the process of doing that, and they started installing sealant tiles today. They are also in the process of doing final touch-up painting. The moves are planned for December 9th and December 16th. And the reason we're doing this is we're trying to move everybody before the winter break so that the staff, school staff, and custodial staff do not have to work over the winter break to do the move. The first, on the December 9th, is and also on Saturday, if need be, on the 10th. And then on the 16th, they're having a fine arts field trip to the Ferguson Center for the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grades. So, those classrooms will all be empty. We can go ahead and finish moving everybody on the 16th, and that'll be done. So, then on the 19th, when we have our next school board meeting, I'll have pictures of the kids with their smiling faces and their new That'd be great. So, while we were building the addition on grounds, they're finally getting this done. Unfortunately, they had to put the construction trailer at dislocation while they're doing the major portion of the construction. It has been moved, and they're in the process of putting the playground equipment back in. And hopefully, by the 19th, we'll have that done as well. So, here we are in the left wing of the building. You can see here, floor tiles down, casework, everything is ready to go. You can see minus the ceiling tile. And that's one of the, one angle in this room, and here's another angle in this room. They've got new doors, new everything in there, new paint, everything in the building is pretty much new. The only thing that we could not do, didn't have the funds to do, was some of the smaller restrooms. We were not able to retile some of the smaller restrooms, but everything else in the building was touched.
So, that whole old section, that's what it looks like now?
Yes, sir.
Oh, my goodness.
And so, the second school, the second project I would touch on is the Grafton School Complex. There's a partial roof replacement there. So, all major roof tear-off and replacement is complete now. They've been busy installing gutters and metal trim work, and they've been working like beavers in the last couple of days. They're trying to get this all done before substantial completion, which is November 30th. Good project has been taking place on the stage repairs, although it's been a little bit slow getting there. But they are putting down the last sheets of plywood. It should be done tomorrow, and they plan to have it painted by Saturday. So, we'll be able to use the stage again. The curtains are about another two weeks out before we receive the new curtains. The roof above it is good, the drains are good, it doesn't leak anymore, so we should be in very good shape. The curtains were 20 years old already, and so is the stage, so we're ahead of the game now on this stage. So, one thing I want to talk about is the weather impacting the coating progress, and I'd like to talk about this a little bit. The roofing company has been working on the Grafton Complex with two crews. A crew performing the roof repairs and a second crew focusing on the coating application. While the roofing crew has made good progress, the coating crew has been frustrated with the weather, and it has impacted their performance. Weather has played an important part, weather has played an important part in coating the roof. The roof and coating material must be 60 degrees or above to apply the coating, and the roof must also be completely dry. The coating crew wound up working several hours each morning just to dry the dew off the roof, and then had to wait for the temperature to rise enough to apply the coating. The impact of weather on the coating application was not known when the terms of the contract were written with a substantial and final completion dates in November and December. In order to achieve the best possible product, we are directing the roofing contractor to stop any further coating application as of last Friday and return in April when the weather is better to allow the optimum coating application. This will result in a delay of the final completion for the roof coating only. So, they will be done with the roof work, the roof repairs, the metal, the gutters, and everything except for the coating.
Mr. Sheerhart?
Yes, ma'am.
Will that cause any problems? foresee any problems being caused?
We do not foresee any problems, of course, because we haven't got the entire roof coated. There will be probably some potential leaks in some areas. The areas that they have already completed, the roof work on and completed coating, they will come back. If there's a leak, we're going to call them, and they're going to come back and respond to those leaks. And they will handle leaks that are in their scope of work at this point in time. So, we expect those to be lessened by a great degree compared to what we had last year, but we don't expect them to be zero at this point in time. Once we get it all completely coated, hopefully, we'll be down to zero.
Is that going to add any more cost to the project?
No, no. The change order is a no-cost change order. It's best interest for us as well as the roofing company to delay this project, the coating part of it.
Okay, thank you.
My question, kind of a parallel, we'll piggyback on that question. All right, if it was not in the contract, or was not in the, they didn't know the temperature requirements for this coating when this whole thing began, or was it something that got overlooked by us or them, or what was the deal with that?
I did not know if they knew about it. I don't know if they expected the temperature to be an impact. We did, I did not understand that there was as much of an impact with the weather on the coating as there was. I didn't understand about the fact that it had to be 60 degrees and above. I didn't understand the fact that it had to be completely dry, so.
I could understand the dry part, but I think I have difficulty with that this company does roofing and there's a requirement of a 60-degree threshold minimum for them to apply and get a good, you know, hold on the coating. That should have been communicated to us, so I hope we make a note of that with this company in the near, you know, in the next, in the future, because obviously, if they miss that major, big, giant, huge stamp on the side of a can that says, "Don't apply unless it's 60 degrees or more," just concerning, you know, just really.
It is to us as well. We expect, I think they expected to make more progress than they did. You know, if they had started in June, you know, if we had the entire summer, because remember, this project didn't start until about the second week in July. So, if they had had that additional month, it might have made all the difference in the world for them getting the coating done much further than they did, so. But anyway, it will be in our best interest for both parties to delay it until next spring.
Absolutely, because we don't want to come back in a year and have to pull all that stuff back off.
We want it perfect. This is a portion of the roof that's been replaced here. You can see in the background here, the lighter colored area. It hasn't been coated yet, but this is just the light-colored roofing roof material. And then here's some of the gutters that are installed. This is along the edge of the gymnasium, which is an area where we've had some problems before with the, but now with the gutters, we shouldn't have a problem. And this, the last one here, is a gutter that's installed over some grills. This is in the A-trim area, and this area, we've had persistent leaks on both the high school and the middle school side. So, hopefully, once, since this gutter is installed now, it should prevent the water. It was running off the top of the roof and sheeting down the brick face here and into that louver, and that's how the water was getting into the building. So, with the gutter installed there, it should direct the water away from that louver, and we should eliminate that problem. And that is going to be my last slide, and do you have any further questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This time, we're going to enter into our comments of citizens. This evening, we have two opportunities to speak. The first will be the public participation at board meetings. The second is a public hearing on the FY18 Capital Improvement Program specifically. If you did not sign up to speak, we will give you time at the end of the meeting to do so. Just like to remind you, as you come up, please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes as indicated by the light here. Okay, Pam Fouchot.
My name is Pam Fouchot. I reside at 103 Kimberly Court, Yorktown, District 4. On November 8th, every precinct except McGruder voted to elect Donald Trump as president. 55% of York County made it known that Trump's policies are those that they desire. One of Trump's promises was to revoke gun-free school zones. The NRA endorsed Trump, and he agreed to enact their platform to arm anyone who wants a firearm without a background check and the ability to carry firearms anywhere. Wayne LaPierre, NRA CEO, stated last week that he wanted to quote, "End the fallacy of gun-free school zones." He said, "Our time is now." This board needs to discuss and prepare for armed visitors, teachers, staff, and perhaps students. Federal law trumps state law and school board policy. The good news is that we will no longer have to purchase sheriffs' cars and hire resource officers. When the special locks on the doors need replacing, we can go back to the much cheaper old-fashioned kind. Placing teachers in hallways and surveillance cameras can be done away with. The bad news is that these teachers and staff who want to arm themselves may ask for hazardous duty pay to ensure, excuse me, to save our schools from crazed gunmen. We may need to stock up on body bags for the potential resulting carnage. As I worked at polls on Election Day, a York County teacher and Trump supporter said she could not wait to be armed in the classroom so she could finally feel safe and protect her students. Unfortunately, school staff is no more or less emotionally stable than the general population. Over 100,000 people are injured and over 30,000 are killed each year by firearms. Accidents happen. People too often think they see a threat where none exist and shoot first. Totally stable people snap and act irrationally. Careful people sometimes leave their firearms accessible to others. Many people who own firearms have had absolutely no training, and definitely few have had police training. And I cannot imagine hormonal teenagers being allowed to enter the classroom armed. I am not saying this tongue-in-cheek or lightly. This is the desire of your constituency and the desire of our president-elect. Much of the Congress and four Supreme Court justices also agree. I want this board to have a plan in place when our schools are filled with those who believe it is their God-given right to be able to shoot and kill anyone who may threaten their sense of well-being. This will be the new law of the land, whether you like it or not. Your staff and the parents of schoolchildren deserve to know how this will be addressed. Silence will not make this go away, and fortunately, this is your new reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Eunice? Eunice, yeah. Kenna? I'm having a hard time here, I'm sorry. Eunice and Kenna? Okay.
Hi, my name is Eunice Stamkin. I am a junior at Tapp High School. You may remember me from speaking at the school board meeting last year, and my address is 104 Oleando Court, Yorktown, Virginia.
Thank you.
Hi, my, hi, my name is Kenna Williams, and I'm also a junior at Tapp High School. We are here today as members of Y Street, and my address is 803 Wymouth Drive, Newport News, Virginia.
Thank you.
Y Street is a youth volunteer program of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth that focuses on promoting healthy living in Virginia. That's where the 24/7 campaign comes in, helping Virginia schools to be tobacco-free 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have successfully worked with school divisions across the state to update their tobacco policies to become 100% comprehensive. The main idea is that tobacco products or electronic cigarettes are not being used by anyone, anywhere, at any time. At Tapp High School and within the York County Division, we've made a lot of progress toward becoming 100% tobacco-free. We have attended principal meetings in September and have met with our principal, Ms. Siders, to discuss the 24/7 campaign, how the 24/7 campaign can partner to provide free resources to create 100% tobacco-free school environment. We are asking you to update your tobacco policy so that it is 100% comprehensive. We have provided a copy of our current tobacco-free policies. First, we recommend updating the definition of property in our policies. It specifies many places where tobacco is prohibited, but there are potential gray areas. Include all school premises inside and outside, whether owned, leased, rented, or chartered. Currently, it only covers the insides of certain buildings and vehicles. Include any school-sponsored or school-related events, whether on or off-site. Prohibit use and distribution of tobacco, nicotine-containing products, and electronic smoking devices by staff, contractors, visitors, whether on or off-site. Remove the ability for principals or directors to designate smoking areas on the grounds outside school buildings. Second, extend a policy to include possession by students and minors, not just use. Third, define tobacco products and tobacco use to include electronic smoking devices, products containing nicotine and any components and accessories used in the consumption of tobacco. By using these terms directly in the definition, it is clear that the entire policy applies to alternative products. Fourth, require consequences for visitors. Consequences support administrators and staff on the ground to ensure the policy is enforced. Fifth, add a provision to include tobacco-free signs. Signage helps to further enforce the communication and visibility of your tobacco policy. Finally, expand language to provide referrals to cessation resources for students. You can use similar language that is found in the regulations for staff. As a partner and resource to York County Schools, we have provided our model policy, language, and comprehensive checklist for your reference in updating your policy. The 24/7 campaign manager will reach out to you in the coming days to continue the discussion and assist in drafting the updated policy. Once you decide to adopt 100% comprehensive tobacco-free policy, the 24/7 campaign has many resources to support its implementation and enforcement. First, the 24/7 campaign will provide free tobacco-free signage to all schools in your school division. Second, a free tobacco-free school kit will be provided to all schools in your division. Third, York County will be added to the map of 100% comprehensive divisions. Fourth, schools in York County will be invited to participate in Tobacco-Free Spirit Day on February 15, 2017, a statewide day of action to celebrate schools and divisions with 100% comprehensive tobacco-free policies.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Carol Bauer.
Good evening. My name is Carol Bauer. I reside at 314 Brook Lane. And I've got a football jersey on, so I'm going to do a little bit of rah-rah-ree right here. So, are you excited? Are you ready to go, fight, win? The answer is yes. Yes, good, thank you. All right, so let's imagine for a minute, it's game day. You have your game plan, you've practiced, you're ready, you have visualized yourself making that very perfect play. You can picture the stands filled to capacity and excited, ready to cheer you on to success. In your mind's eye, you've completed that uncatchable pass. You've kicked the ball for the field goal to win the game. You are amazing, and the crowd is going wild. Yes, okay, great, but let's back up for just a moment. How do we prepare for that picky game, perfect game? How will we know we're ready? What drills, plays, and ideas are you going to have to have to be ready? By planning and preparing, you will be ready for the inevitable penalties that might come your way. You'll be ready to respond to the trick plays and any attempts to blindside you. Now, ESSA, Team ESSA. ESSA is our game plan, to have the perfect academic game plan. It's for our students to make sure that we can have a perfect classroom, perfect school, and perfect school division. What will it look like, and what penalties do we have to be aware of? How can we make ESSA work for us to make York County, Virginia, and our federal government do the kind of education program that we want to have? So, let's think for just a minute about the penalties. Let's think about when there's a flag on the play because there are too many men on the field. That's like when our classrooms are overcrowded and we aren't able to meet all the needs of our students. We need to let Congress, the General Assembly, and our localities know that that's an indicator of quality education, that that's a penalty. The public understands a number of students in a class is an indicator of commitment to public education and a commitment to those students whose futures we shape every day in our rooms. Encroachment, that movement before the snap, for instance, when snap judgments are being made about what's happening in our schools without all the facts. In the public side, we need to guard against snap judgments about what's happening every day in our classrooms. False starts. If you're in education, you're all familiar with false starts about initiatives that someone thought would be great for your class, even though educators are the ones in the classrooms. Educators know what the best policies would be, but we are rarely asked, and ESSA is that opportunity to ask our current practitioner what's best for our students. So many times, there's also pass interference. What's that? That's testing, testing that interferes with the best interests of our students. Some of our students that were recognized tonight, I was talking to a couple of the seniors of the month, and I asked them about testing, and they said, "Yeah, we want to talk about it." Is that really preparing them for their future in their colleges? Well, ESSA is the game plan, and I know Mr. Jarrett was talking about ESSA as well, but this is our moment to make sure that we have a game plan to implement ESSA. I was looking at the York County mission, and it certainly is aligned with the proclamation that you could make to show your support for ESSA and what's best for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go off. Is that yellow light not working evidently? It's going right. No, 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 I'm just, I haven't seen. It's nice to give them a little warning before the red goes. Okay. Sam Urie.
Sam Urie, 302 Penrith Crossing, Yorktown, Virginia, 23692. I'm speaking to you on behalf of the York Education Association as President of the York Education Association. Carol Bauer gave you a little insight into ESSA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act. One of the things that's extremely important about ESSA is that it's supposed to include all practitioners, not just the teachers. I've been talking about how I was going to include and incorporate the educational support personnel, and that's one of the things that I plan on emphasizing today. They are all part of the team. They're all, because we're one team, one YCSA, one mission. So all of us need to be ensuring that we're doing all we can for the positive nature and the climate of our schools. That means the custodian that opens our buildings in the morning and makes sure that they have not only adequate equipment, but also the ability to do all the things that they need to do for their job. Today, that was tested in my classroom as somebody decided to have an accident, so to speak, that was totally out of control and resulted in me having to bounce my classes as a custodian came in to clean up. So the fact that they were able to easily and quickly respond was a great thing. I'm also very appreciative that it didn't result in anybody else having that same reaction, because sometimes in a classroom environment, that may happen. So we were able to bounce to another class, get that cleaned up, and take care of it. The custodian being able to do that, having the equipment to do that, was paramount. Making sure that they have the space that's similar, comparatively speaking, is another thing that I was concerned with. I mean, I've been looking at buildings and saying, "This is what the square footage is. How much does it come down to a custodian having to clean overnight?" I may not have perfectly accurate figures, but it kind of gives me an idea of how much space each one of our custodians, each one of our buildings, especially at night, is trying to cover. Because there are times I'll go, "Oh, this didn't went taken care of," and then I find out that there was a shortage, or they don't have substitutes to take care of it, or they've got to increase their coverage zones because they're short somebody. Those are things we want to make sure to get addressed in such a way that we're not overworking our custodians, and we're making sure that they're able to do the job and maintain the quality of jobs that we have in our county. The second area I said I was going to be bringing up, bringing to your attention, was the nurses. Nurses are a very big concern of mine right now, because my understanding is right now, York County doesn't have a lead nurse. We tried to divide the job into two pieces, and we don't, by not having the lead nurse, we also don't have an attendant nurse to kind of fill in when somebody is short. The yellow light is working. So I've had some discussions with Dr. Carl James and some others about some of my concerns related to the nurses, and we hope that by having these discussions that we'll be able to reach a happy medium where we're able to meet the needs of the students, because right now, the number of demands on our nurses is awesome. I mean, I'm amazed that we are able to keep them because of how much work is actually on them, and compared to how we pay and they pay in other school divisions, it's a big concern. Sorry that I'm out of time right now, but there'll be some other issues that were brought up to put things in context in terms of pay and issues related to our state emphasis and what we need to be doing from the state and how we should be lobbying the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pam Gaspar. Okay, Mary Pat Gallagher.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Committee, Dr. Shender. My name is Mary Pat Gallagher, and I reside at 219 Silver Fox Trace, Yorktown, Virginia, 23693. I am here as Team ESSA, but I don't have their fancy shirts, asking us what is our game plan? We, as a reminder, the state of Virginia rankings, I just want to go over a couple. Per capita, the personal income, Virginia ranks 10th in the state, 10th. Per pupil, public elementary and school, secondary school revenue, from state sources, Virginia ranks 39th. Average teacher salary as a percent of average annual pay of all workers, Virginia ranks 48th. And in state and local tax revenue as a percent of personal income, Virginia ranks 43rd. However, in 4th grade math, Virginia ranks 4th. In 4th grade reading, Virginia ranks 4th. And these are according to reputable sources as the Congressional Quarterly and the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee. Another thing that I just want to reiterate what Sam mentioned was that we just really need to lobby, to get out, put pressure on our legislators for the funding, funding to fund ESSA, funding to get our students' schools back up to par. Virginia continues to invest less in our schools and students than before the recession. A new report on the Center of Budget and Policy reports shows that Virginia is among the third of states with the largest cuts to poor pupil spending. Easy for you to say. School cuts undermine promising education reforms such as reducing class sizes, improving teacher quality, increasing learning time, and expanding early childhood education and have damaging effect. So the performance of Virginia actually outcomes a future economic success. And our students are doing so well in so many areas. However, the performance of black students, low-income students, and English-language learners in Virginia in national exams has declined in multiple grades since the recession, while overall student performance in Virginia has gone up steadily on these tests. So disparity might be a consequence of the cuts to education, as they undermine the ability of schools to provide additional services that many of these students require. So the future of Virginia's children, communities, commonwealth depends heavily on the quality of K-12 schools, yet Virginia continues to rank among the states that have made the deepest cuts in its support for its schools and students. I just want you to know that we need a game plan. ESSA is our opportunity to have a game plan, so what is our game plan? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathleen, did you want to speak at this time, or did you mean to sign up for the CIP portion? Are you just going to speak on the CIP, or was it a different topic? For the... That would probably be now. Yeah. That's okay.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Howe. I reside at 121 Lance Way, Yorktown, Virginia, 23693. Students arrive by bus at Grafton High School as early as 6:45 a.m. All high schools in York County start at 7:20 with the exception of one. York River Academy, also known as YRA, starts at 8:25 a.m. As a result, those students who attend Grafton High that take the bus to school are arriving at school almost 30 minutes prior to school starting in the morning. This excludes those who drive themselves to school or are driven by someone else. I know a few students who attend YRA, and the start time has made a world of difference for them. They get out at 3:10 as opposed to the 2:05 for the other York County high schools. Studies have shown by both the Center of Disease Control and American Pediatrics that by schools starting later, students gain more sleep in addition to health benefits, such as lowering the rates of depressive symptoms, academic performance improves, there are less dropouts, fewer absenteeism and tardies, and there are significant improvements in standardized test scores. Not to mention, another thing everybody's interested in, the improvement in sports performance. The University of Minnesota found students also intake less caffeine and are involved in fewer car crashes. Students are stressed more, and starting schools so early makes it difficult to maximize their full academic potential. Our support for an 8 a.m. or later school start time here in York County continues to grow. I read recently that the state legislature of Massachusetts is considering a bill to study school start times since tardiness fell 35% and Ds and Fs were cut in half in the state of New Hampshire just recently because they changed over to a later school start time. If everything works out well, they will implement a later school start time in the state of Massachusetts for the 2017-2018 school year. We have supporters, over 40 supporters from the Bruton area, TAB, Grafton, and York areas, some of which are present tonight. You can stand if you'd like. We request the York County School Board implement an 8 a.m. or later school start time for the 2018 school year. I'll just close up and skip my other sentence there. I'm very pleased with the progress that the York County School Board is making, especially that you plan on holding a forum to educate the citizens of York County on November 30 at York High School Auditorium. Those of you who are interested, please come out and learn more. If you have any questions or concerns, hopefully they can be answered that night. Thank you for all you've done thus far and for what you continue to do.
Thank you. That concludes our public participation in board meetings. If there, once again, if there is anybody that wishes to speak and is not signed up to do that, I will give you additional time at the end of the meeting. Dr. Shender, would you like to have a few remarks before we open our public hearing?
Yes, Dr. George, thank you. Board members, the capital improvement program recommendation for FY18 includes several projects. I want to summarize just a few of them this evening. The major projects include a roof replacement at two of our elementary schools, HVAC replacements at two schools, window replacements at two schools, and security vestibules at three of our schools, also enclosing the breezeways at two elementary schools. The CIP document has been restructured by school, so if you pull up the CIP and look at it, it's no longer by project. Our team found out that was a little bit difficult to follow. So it's organized by school so that our community can easily use this document. It's also important to note that for the FY18, FY22 years of the CIP, the school division stayed within the funding levels that were approved by the Board of Supervisors last year. Finally, the school board will hold another work session on the CIP on December 5, and then consider for approval on December 19 at their regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shender. This time, I'd like to open up the public hearing on the FY18 capital improvements program. We have one person signed up to speak, David Forrest.
Good evening, Board. My name is David Forrest. I live at 104 Three Point Court, Yorktown, Virginia, 23692. And I think you need to ask for more money in the CIP plan. The CIP plan in 2009, seven years ago, is when we first started planning for this new school. Since that time, Neil Morgan presented like a 10-year history of what we've given to the CIPs, and that funding was at $6.7 million per year. And that would be sufficient if we had, you know, infrastructure worth a quarter of a billion dollars in our schools. But unfortunately, we've got, or fortunately, we've got 20 schools worth $25 million a piece. That adds up to half a billion dollar worth of infrastructure. We're not asking for enough money to maintain the 20 schools on a 40-year depreciation schedule. We need to ask for like half a school a year worth of funding to keep up, keep up with Over that period of time since that CIP, you know, we've seen the projections of the students come to, come to the levels that we've got now. And now we're at a place where we've got 97% capacity in the whole elementary school system. That causes a couple of problems in things like York County Elementary, where we end up with a substandard lot size, a substandard parking, undersized cafeteria, and substandard playgrounds by the state standards. We should be having two hard-surface playgrounds, so we have none because we have the trailers parked on. The current CIP plan, I think, has an extension of trailers, go for another two years on there, taking trailers out to 2021. How's this stuff? York County Elementary is overcrowded at 115%. This causes a problem with rezoning. If you try to touch anything with rezoning, you won't be able to get down into the 85%, 90% level. Any of the schools that are at the 113%, 143%, if you tried to do rezoning to move those into the other things, you're going to raise the other schools up above the ideal level, and you won't have space to, if there's some disaster in the classroom, you have to move stuff out. If you're overcapacity, you won't have spaces to move the new classes to. The six-year plan is a change from before. We used to be using a 10-year plan. And it doesn't cover the planned enrollment that's already on the books. The expansion at Marquis is a 500-unit school. If you're going to try and raise the capacity up to cover 100, or cover, get things down to 85%, 90% level, you need 1,100 seats worth of new capacity. You may have been directed by the school board to ask for less than you need, but you need to ask for enough to maintain the schools so we don't decay. These CIPs do not present a plan to make schools meet state standards, but instead match the county's no-new-revenue projections and our plan for decay in the schools rather than what we need. I guess I'd like to close with saying like, you need to ask for more money. If you don't ask for more money in your plans that you publish, that doesn't give us any tools for us to advocate for more funding for you guys. If you trim to the, what the Board of Directors directs you to do, everything looks like it balanced and looks like a good plan on paper, but it doesn't give any meat to take to anybody else to ask for more money.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. All right, matters by board members. All right, Mr. Richardson, we're going to throw you right in here. Number one.
I don't really have anything to bring up, other than I would like to thank everyone for, that really helped me with my, the recent election, my family, friends, and more especially my wife. She put up with a lot during that time, and it was a lot of hard work. So I do want to thank them and the people of District Four for electing me to this position. Hopefully, I can do, if I can only do half the job that the Honorable Paige Mennner did, I'll be doing well, I think, because he did such a phenomenal job here. No one can fill his shoes, but I'm going to do my best to do what I can to do the best for the people of District Four. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
My turn.
Sure.
Only got 27 items here. It shouldn't take long. No, actually, I just want to first say, Jim Richardson, congratulations. I look forward to working with you on this board. Known you a long time. I think I was a teenager when I first met you and rode along in your patrol car when you were a deputy, and probably the reason why I have a job I do have now. But I know that your experience within the county government, within policy, within budget, all that will bring a lot of good information that we as a board, as a team, will work with, obviously. So congratulations and look forward to working with you on this board. Principal of the day. I participated, as we all did, with that. Had a great time at York County Elementary School. I learned one thing, I do not want to be a principal. I'm glad that was not a career path that I chose. I have a renewed level of respect for principals. I know their job is tough, it's ever-changing in the day, there's never a dull moment around the corner, and, but I was very welcomed, and I really enjoyed the time at York County Elementary School. Elementary School. Wish I could probably spend more time with other principals at other levels to get an insight of what really goes on behind the scenes, because there's so much there that you just have no idea whatsoever. I want to just make a mention of this, just for a minute, the 24/7. I know you all have come before us many times, and so I'm hoping this time does open up some discussion among this board to really seriously take a look at this and our policy, because I know you've worked hard, really have worked hard. And when something's brought to us from a student or students, I look at that as a little different than a state policy change or something that's kind of mandated or thrown at us that we have to adapt to. But when it's something that I feel like students are really behind and it's driven by a student, is brought to us by a student, is brought to us again by the same student, is brought to us again for the third or fourth time as, from a student, you're persistent, which is good, you're consistent, which is good. And so I look forward to looking at this. So, Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to throw that on your desk to have some more discussion on. And other than that, everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Start with dessert, end with dessert, and have some more dessert. And throw the turkey in there at the same time somewhere. But everybody enjoy their break, and we'll see you later. Thank you.
Okay, well, first, I would like to welcome Jimmy Richardson to the school board and to the YCSD team. Congratulations, and I want you to feel welcome to this division and a part of the team. And I'd like to say that Jimmy Richardson has hit the ground running already. He was initiated last week when he attended the Virginia School Boards Association with Conference in Williamsburg with the rest of us. We attended several seminars at the VSBA conference, but I wanted to highlight one seminar that I attended that was held by the folks in Arlington that showcased their senior project. All seniors must complete a project on the topic of their choice, whether it's scientific, literary, musical, vocational, the topics are endless. And they work with a mentor outside the classroom. And it's my understanding from the Arlington educators that the Virginia Department of Education is looking at their program to incorporate into the new high school graduate that's, that the state officials are working on. I loved what they were doing in Arlington. I know that the Governor's School for Science and Technology incorporates senior project in their program, as well as many private schools in the area. And I look forward to finding out more about what the state is going to propose, and I hope that we have that on our radar, too. Because when I heard the students talk about how enlightening it was for them to be a part of that project, and it's not just for the high flyers, the students who were in the vocational courses, they might be putting together an old car and learning how to repair it with an automotive shop. They were doing all kinds of things, and it was very exciting to see. I also had the opportunity to be principal for the day at Coventry Elementary School. And I tell you, I tweeted out that day, forget principal of the day, I'm ready to go back and be a student at Coventry because learning is fun there. I was so impressed with what they were doing in the classroom. The students were so very engaged and having fun, and several of the classrooms have actually pushed their seating, their regular chairs to the side and have these great, I don't know what you call them, but like, look like a bouncy ball that they're sitting on, and the kids were loving it. And I, I had a great time. I'm not sure I want to be a principal, but like I said, I'll, I'll be a student. I'll go back 40 years and be a student. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Paul Assassin for having me there and allowing me the opportunity to shadow her. And with that, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
All right, Ms. Bar.
My next in line, I'm going to make it number four, Mr. Richardson. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
As I indicated to you when we talked, I look forward to working with you and for all the students of York County. Join the team, and we, we, like you say, you've hit the ground running, but it's a wonderful experience when you can work with a group and, and see the positive outcomes of your Mark, I'm going to join you in looking at this smoking policy. I know we have something in our policy manual now that we have updated, and just somewhere in the near future, take a look at just what that policy is and see if there's anything we need to do to tighten that up. Cynthia, I already mentioned VSBA, the annual conference is always a highlight to attend the conference and hear the inspirational speakers that give you just that little jar, that little nudge ahead when you think, okay, I've done, I've had it, I'm tired, I need to, to back off a little bit. They give you that extra nudge to say you're in it for all the right reasons. And I was able to, to participate in the delegate assembly, and that's where the representative from each of the school divisions set the policy for VSBA. Lastly, I had the opportunity to be principal for a day at Bruton High School, and I want to thank Mrs. Alitha Dockery for all the fun and excitement, and it was a quiet day. I don't know what would happen if it was a stressful day, if anything goes wrong and what she would have to do to go into a different mode, but it was fantastic. It was seeing the students that you know in the community, and when they watch you walk in the door, what are you doing here? Coming to check on you? Oh, no, 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 you can't do that, you can't do that. But Bruton is like going back home. When, when all three students, all three sons have gone through Bruton High, it's literally going back home. And I had a fantastic day. So to her, to her demonstrators, to the staff, to the students, it was a fantastic day. And lastly, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Have a wonderfully blessed holiday with family and friends. And to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. While we're on the principal of the day, I want to bet y'all I was principal of the I went to TAB Middle, and I got to tell you, it was the best experience. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I think I looped that school about 15 or 20 times. I've never been so tired on my feet. Started there at, what, 7:30, something like that? By the end of the day, I felt like I'd been there since 3:00 in the morning. It's a lot of work, but it was one of the best things that I think we could do, is to get into those schools and just see what they do, get down in the trenches and just the, the organization. And one thing that really impressed me about TAB Middle, like many of the other schools, they, they jump in, the principal Heather Young may be in a meeting, maybe in an observation in a class, something else comes up, she has to get up, she has to go, somebody else comes in and fills that and, and, you know, jumps in and does their part. They just work together as a team, and I was just, just utterly impressed, really was. Anyway, a couple of things to remember, Community Information System, November 30th, Adolescent Sleep Patterns, York High School, 6:30. Just so you know, we've all had conversations with Dr. Robert Verona and Darryl Drobnik, the experts on the sleep patterns. I think all of us have probably spoken to them by now. They will be there. They are the one that'll be leading the study and providing the information, so it's going to be a really great, great chance for people to get some information, get some questions answered, that sort of thing. Okay? Second, holiday concerts. Is it on the website? If it's not, it will be tomorrow. All the holiday concerts that are coming up, because it's got to be like right now or soon after. So don't forget those, it's a great time. It doesn't cost anything, it's just a great service that, that the schools provide. Don't forget, for the first time in a long time, there is no school on Wednesday, so don't send your child to school on Wednesday. And with that...
There will be no bus to pick them up.
There will be no bus. With that, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving and have a great time with your family and your loved ones. Thank you. All righty, well, let's move right into financial matters. And Ms. Kerski, could you go ahead and start with us?
I sure will. And if anyone would like to see the financial report, the numbers and figures, this information is available on the division website, yorkcountyschools.org. You can find this board docs document under the school board and through tonight's agenda. And first, let's turn to the consideration of approval of claims certified for payment, which totals more than $6.26 million. If you look down, we have expenses for New Horizons and New Horizons Career and Technical Centers, as well as the Governor's School and Special Education Program. And you will see different expenditures, but these total 1.25 million. And note that we pay 20% of the special education services upfront based on the projected student enrollment for the year. We also have routinely, routine monthly expenses. So you will see expenditures to Cox Communications for telephone service, to Sadekso for the school breakfast and lunch programs, and to Dominion Virginia Power for utilities. You'll see several expenditures. I think it's important to note for the community that the, the total utility bill for all of our schools and the York County School Division for the year is 1.74 million dollars. We go through the monthly financial report, and you can see these figures, but I think when you see the total picture, you get an idea of how expensive it actually is to maintain our buildings just monthly to provide heat, AC, or electricity. We have construction payments to Oyster Point Construction for $303,959 and 1.2 million for the Waller Mill additions and renovations. Several expenses include the, cover the new modular units at McGruder and Yorktown Elementary, but these expenses, which total 446,000, only cover the setup and installation, not the lease. The lease we will see later, and that will cover $110,000 for the units at both schools. $283,662 for grounds maintenance. This is a payment for quarter two. So the total amount for grounds maintenance for the year is 1.1 million. As per the agreement with the Sheriff's Department, the school division pays for vehicles used by school resource officers, and this is an annual expense of $16,392. And this annual allotment is then transferred to the County Transportation Fund, and it's my understanding that they replace these vehicles on a, every four to six years. We also have an expenditure for the William &amp; Mary cohort. We have 22 instructional staff, mostly teachers, in the fall cohort. We pay their tuition upfront, however, they reimburse us for this cost. And now, let's turn to the monthly financial report. For the month of October, we have received 56% of our funding at $75,417,105, and that's about $3 million lower than this time last year. And the reason? We received a large Impact Aid payments last year at this time. And as you all know, the federal government cuts that check when the federal government feels like it. So, this year, we have received $822,000 compared to the 5.6 million we had received last year in back payments that actually dated back to FY10. So the federal government has finally caught up to payments due in FY15. Our expenditures are $28,265,112. Our encumbered expenditures are $5.79 million. These amounts represent an increase by 1.1 to 1.5 million from October 2015, which is due to the encumbrance for a bus replacement, as well as the increased cost of employee salaries, because we were able to give all YCSD employees a step increase in FY17. The unencumbered balance is 99.8 million. And if you look at the food service report, it reflects two months' operation, and Mr. Jarrett tells us that nothing looks out of trend or unusual in the food service report. We have received $546,147 in revenue, and total expenditures are $495,602. And finally, tonight, we have one procurement, and that is $58,320 for Microsoft server license and software. And with that, I would like to move the financial report.
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Mrs. Kerski and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve financial matters. Mrs. Kerski? Yes. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. Next, we have our consent calendar with three items briefly. The approval of personnel actions, the approval of donations in the amount of $7,679.59, and the between the County of, County School Board of York County, Virginia, and Brian and Isabel Almond. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Any questions? Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Dr. George and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the consent calendar. Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerski?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. Thank you. Under action items, we have four items. The first is the approval of minutes from a special meeting on October 10th, 2016. Could I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the minutes from a special meeting on October 10th. Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerski?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
I abstain.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. Next, we have approval of minutes from special meetings on October 24th, 2016 at 4:30 and October 24th, 2016 at 5:15.
Move approval.
Second.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mrs. Kerski to approve the minutes from a special meeting on October 24th. Mrs. Kerski?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Abstain.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. Next, we have approval of minutes from a regular meeting on October 24th, 2016. I need a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Mrs. Kerski to approve the minutes from a regular meeting on October 24th. Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Abstain.
Mrs. Kerski?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. And finally, we have approval of minutes from a special meeting on November 7th, 2016. I need a motion to approve?
Move approval.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mrs. Kerski to approve the minutes from a special meeting on November 7th. Mr. Richardson?
Abstain.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerski?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. Next, under policy discussion, there are no items. Under first reading, we do have, Dr. Shander, would like to share some further details, please.
Since our last meeting, there have been no changes to the annual review of file IGBC, Family Involvement Policy, so there have been no changes since our last meeting.
And second reading, we have none. And this brings us to the report of our mighty superintendent.
Thank you for that wonderful introduction, Dr. George. Board members, I also want to take this opportunity to welcome Mr. Richardson to the school board. Certainly look forward to getting to know you, also having you spend some time with each of our team members to learn a little bit about all of the various roles within the school division. So we're looking forward to setting those times up with you as well. Just a, a couple of items here. I've crossed out a few because I don't want to repeat a few of the items that the board members have already discussed. It's important for the community and for our staff to know that our, our staff, we're continuing to have budget discussions, preliminary budget discussions with county personnel pertaining to next year's operating budget and funding matters. So I want to make sure that our staff members and community know that we've already begun those conversations. You've heard principal for a day mentioned this evening. I did want to just talk a little bit about what, what that program was. As part of recognizing November's VSBA Bring Your Legislator to School Month in American Education Week, we developed our first principal for a day program. And Catherine Goff, who's sitting here, was a main contributor to the development of that program and organizing that and really educating our principals and talking to a lot of our folks to get them into the schools. So kudos to Ms. Goff for all of her work on that. But the principal for a day program is where we had many state and local elected officials, including Board of Supervisors and legislators, come into our schools, also key military leaders and business leaders in the community. They were paired with a principal for a day. They were paired with a principal for a day to learn firsthand about the issues facing, facing today's educators and administrators, and you heard a lot of examples of that this evening. So during the past two weeks, they took part in activities ranging from staff meetings, parent conferences, classroom observations, lunchroom, carpool duty, just to name a few of them. And I want to thank all of those, our board members, as well as everyone who participated in that program, giving their time to us. Let's see. I attended VSBA with the school board as well last week and got to sit some, some pretty interesting sessions. We had a vast meeting up there as well, so I got to meet with all of the superintendents in the state to look at ESSA and some of the standards of accreditation, where they are with that model. So we've been tracking that as well. Two more items. We had a number of our schools participating in athletics at the state level. A number of our programs, whether it was football, field hockey, a number of other sports. And certainly want to congratulate all of our student athletes and their coaches in the schools. It's definitely an exciting time when your schools are doing well in athletics in the fall season, because it sort of brings you forward for, for winter sports. So we're certainly proud of all of our student athletes. In closing, I want to extend all, to all of our staff, parents, and students a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving holiday break. Please enjoy your family and friends, and hopefully a little relaxation and, and great food. So happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
All right. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board who has not had a chance to do so? Okay, just a reminder, our next work session will be on December 5th at 6 o'clock in the East Room, and I'd like once again to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and we are now adjourned.